The November 21st, 2024 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Bourdain. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: On January 25th, 2024, email to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfman. Ms. Perez, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Ms. Vice President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempt from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
I have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. De La Pietro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
...to the flag of the United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sedana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
Will someone please make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So motion.
Motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro and a second by Ms. Perez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids or proposals received by the Board.
Thank you. No bids were received this time.
Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative, Sakina Glenn, from J.F. John F. Kennedy Memorial High School. Welcome, Sakina.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Sakina is a stellar student leader at JFK. Her enthusiasm for learning and involvement has made a lasting positive impact on the class of 2025. Sakina has consistently demonstrated a strong work ethic through not just her academics, but in her leadership and presence and her abundance of extracurricular activities. She's a four-year member of the volleyball team and has participated on the softball team. Sakina is also the manager to the JFK wrestling team. Beyond her participation in athletics, Sakina's other activities include Black Student Union DEI, American Cancer Society, Student Council, and Heroes and Cool Kids. She was elected as a member of the 2024 Homecoming Court and was recently honored as JFK's September Senior of the Month. Outside of school, Sakina works for the Woodbridge Rec Center, supervising children's parties. In addition, Sakina is an avid volunteer at both school-sponsored activities and in the greater community as well, logging 100 hours of volunteer service. Next year, Sakina plans to attend a four-year college to major in marketing. As someone who is described as kind, outgoing, humble, and dedicated, there is no doubt that Sakina will be an asset to the business world and beyond. I personally met with Sakina as she is a member of the Student Advisory Council and attended the first meeting on October 19th. I was impressed as I watched Sakina and this group of 15 young adults collaborate together. I'm definitely looking forward to the subsequent meetings. Thank you, Sakina, for being with us this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino, and the members of the Board for inviting me here. I am very glad to be here. At school, now, number one, the Scholastic Book Fair took place during the week of October 21st. The Diwali Food Drive collection was organized by Student Council members. On November 1st, MABE celebrated their guest veteran with Grade Four music students singing and presenting of handwritten cards. Grade Five students participated in the Mad Science Program. On October 15th, the school made a donation of breast cancer awareness. November's community of caring theme was about respect, and any student who showed examples of respect were acknowledged and rewarded. Lastly, during School Violence Week, MABE students took part in the School Spirit Week with various themed dates. At School 18, the Scholastic Book Fair took place during the week of October 21st and was a very successful event. Food for Diwali food drive has been collected by NEHS students who are assisting in running this event. Students had a visit from Darius the Therapy Dog on Wednesday, October 23rd. On November 1st, students celebrated Veterans Day by making cards for their guest veteran. And 4th grade students had the opportunity to sign up for the Mad Science Tis program. At School 19, the Scholastic Book Fair took place in October. Students love getting new books. The MPT PTO hosted a movie night under the stars where participants were able to watch the movie Inside Out on an outside screen with their friends and family. On October 25th, students and staffs fundraised for breast cancer awareness by selling shirts and bracelets. All donations were made to the staff member's daughter who was battling breast cancer. A collection of food for the Diwali food drive continues to go on. October 31st, students participated in both a Halloween parade and party. And on November 1st, MPT hosted their annual Bring a Veteran to Breakfast. At School 24, there was a Pink Out for Breast Cancer Awareness that raised money for the American Cancer Society. A Swala Diwali food drive continues to take place. A trunk or treat was held on October 23rd, and on the 31st, there was a Halloween parade and party for students. And lastly, students celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month by doing activities in their classroom. At School 26, students enjoyed Spirit Week and lessons for the Week of Inclusion and Week of Respect. There was a food collection for the Sewal Diwali food drive. Student Council kicked off their Soc-October to collect socks for veterans. In celebration of Spanish Heritage Month, students learned dances from the Islin Middle School's dance classes. A Pink Out for Breast Cancer Awareness event raised money for the American Cancer Society, and the semi-annual Scholastic Book Fair was held in a terrific turnout. At School 29, the National Elementary Honor Society is running the We Feed Woodbridge Diwali food drive. Students who donate get chants in a lottery to pie a teacher in the face during the assembly. And the NEHS is running a PJ Day fundraiser for Children's Hospital in Philadelphia. At Ford's Middle, on Wednesday, October 23rd, there was a performance by Segunda Quimbaba Falloric Center presented to 7th grade students, providing an educational and interactive experience, teaching historical facts of Afro-Porter Rican, Plana, and Bamba music. The FMS showstoppers were one of the 10 school finalists out of the thousands to submit their final presentation for the opportunity to perform for the Christmas tree lighting at Rockefeller Center. Final results are forthcoming. Engineers teaching algebra engaged the 8th grade math classes. There was an interactive experiment in which students learned that algebra is a tool of expression and discovery in all fields of endeavor, and that math is not just a subject, but a necessary language. On October 24th, 8th grade students went to the AT&amp;T Imagine Day where they learned about opportunities in science, technology, engineering, and math, with hands-on activities that involved connected cars, cybersecurity, and top experts in research, conversation, and explorership. Lastly, on Friday, October 25th, the PTO sponsored a costume dance. And finally, at John F. Kennedy Memorial, on October 2nd, the JFK Chapter of National Honor Society hosted our annual Garba Dance. Students came dressed to impress in traditional attire and danced the night away. On October 23rd, the JFK Chapter of American Cancer Society hosted their annual Breast Cancer Walk and raised money for cancer research. On October 24th, JFK recognized 11 students as condemned students in the National Merit Scholarship Program. We also had one semifinalist and three students receiving national recognition for being the top 10% of African-American and Latino test takers. Also, on October 24th, the senior class held its first homecoming dance where students from all grades came together for a night of good fun and school spirit. On October 31st, 9th and 10th graders participated in anti-bullying assembly sponsored by the U.S. Marines. The ASA BMX riders turned the JFK Gymnasium into a BMX action sports arena, all while passing on the positive message about treating each other with respect and pursuing our passions. Finally, in line with their resolution under item number 10 on the superintendent's agenda, JFK would like to acknowledge the members of our chapter of the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, or FCCLA, with their incredible accomplishment. This summer, a group of eight Mustangs, along with their advisor, Ms. Santana, traveled to Seattle, Washington to compete in the National FCCLA competition. Among the thousands competing from across the nation, Sophia Shu earned her first place in Fashion Design Level 3. Mishri Patel and Risham Desai both earned first place in Repurpose and Redesign Level 2. Chesia Sienaz, Radha Patel, and Ridi Patel earned silver medals in Fashion Design Level 2. And the president of the JFK FCCLA, Kiara Cruz, earned fourth place in Fashion Construction and Design Challenge. We are so proud of our FCCLA members and all their hard work.
Thank you, Sakina, for your detailed report. Tonight, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. However, if you're unable to stay, we won't be offended.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I do have a lot of precal homework.
Sure you do. Well, you did a great job.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Dr. Parry for coming to support his student, as always. Thank you, Dr. Parry. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of October 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Bourdain. I presented the Board the following reports for the month of October 2024: Register of Statistics, Report of Fire Drills, Student Suspension Report for Elementary, Student Suspension Reports for Secondary, Bomb Threat Report, and the monthly report of the Attendance Officers.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding agenda items being presented this evening. When you come up to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No responses will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Anything on the agenda items?
Good evening. Paul Lund, Hope Lund. Personnel would be an agenda item, true?
Yes.
From last time, I want to see, it's been a month or so, is there any updates on the investigation of the vice principal in Woodbridge that was under investigation?
No.
No.
Mr. Lund, there's nothing on the agenda related to that matter, so if you have that question, you can come back up at the general
Thank you.
...public session. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no others. The superintendent's agenda. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. I have 15 items to present to the Board this evening.
Do I have a motion for the superintendent's agenda?
So motion.
Motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. I have a motion by Mr. Sedana, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Just want to clarify one thing before the roll call.
I'm sorry.
I have 15. Okay. Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed?
Madam Vice President, I would need to abstain on item 15 in the name of Rutgers, and yes to all the others.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Perez?
Madam Vice President, I also will be abstaining on item number 15 in the name of Rutgers, yes to all other items.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
And Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Communication, Policy, and Planning Agenda. Mr. Mohammed?
Madam Vice President, thank you. The Communication, Policy, and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following three recommendations. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Mohammed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology. Mr. Sedana?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Curriculum, Extracurricular Activities, and Technology Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction present the following 10 items, and move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Motion by Mr. Sedana, seconded by Mrs. Perez. Sorry, stumbled over that one. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Finance and Insurance. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following eight items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Motion by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Safety and Security. Mr. Velez?
Thank you, Madam President. The Safety and Security Committee on Recommendation of Superintendent of Schools present the following one item. I move for adoption.
I have a motion from Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Velez, seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Dining and Transportation. Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Dining and Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Personnel Agenda. Mr. De La Pietro?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following 44 items, and move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the Board? Seeing none, is there any new business that should be brought to the attention of the Seeing none, we will now open this meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and section of the township in which you reside for the record. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No responses will be given until you have fully completed all your comments, so as to not interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak.
Anthony Mara, I reside in Edison. My timer. I'm here to discuss Policy 5145.7. This policy, in plain terms, allows for child abuse. Why? Would anyone entrust to a minor healthcare decisions? That's what parents do, and I suspect here in Woodbridge, to some degree, it's done by teachers. If a child is sick, he'll send to the nurse's office. Would you allow a child to drink alcohol? No, it's illegal until you're of drinking age. Yet we can allow a child to make his or her own decision, to change a gender? Come on, that's hypocrisy, that's craziness. Ordinarily, the Division of Child Protection and Permissory should be called for this. This child wants to mutilate his body or her body, but no, we stand back and say, this is a child's right. They're children. They don't know any better. We're the grown-ups, we're supposed to educate them, and we do in every other area of life except this. This is insanity. Let me read something here. Did you know that in New Jersey, a parent or guardian must be present and sign a written document for ear piercing as well as body piercing for minors? And I can cite you the Administrative Code Regulation if I want, Mr. Bush, I'd be happy to hand it to you right now. Moreover, minors cannot have genitalia piercings even with parent-guardian consent. Again, there's an Administrative Code Regulation. In our state, tattoos also require written permission from a minor's parent or legal guardian. In fact, Title 2C of the Criminal Code says a person commits a disorderly persons offense if he knowingly tattoos or engages in body piercing of a minor under the age of 18 years without first obtaining written permission from the minor's parent or legal guardian. But we can allow this child to mutilate his genitalia without parental consent if he says, "I want to change gender. I want to go from a boy to a girl, or girl to a boy." That is insanity. I think the words of the Lord Jesus Christ, God incarnate, are appropriate at this time. He said, "Have you not read that He created them from the beginning, made them male and female?" He didn't say male, female, and a dozen other genders. There are two, male and female. But we're allowing our children to make a choice, to change it to whatever else they want to choose. That is insane. That is child abuse. I started out by saying, "That is child abuse," and we need to stop that. And then, of course, we're allowing boys to use restrooms or compete in sports with girls. That's not equality. You know, our society is really big about equality. We want equality everywhere. That's not equality, that's superiority. That's persecution. Would you want your mom in a restroom where a boy can change his mind? He can change his mind, he's done it once before. You know, I think today, instead of being a girl, I'll be a boy again. And he's in a restroom with girls. Come on. This policy needs to be abolished, and that's why I'm here today, and I thank you for
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gerald Maglio, Dolores Turco Foundation, and in the past, I've provided you with some legal and medical research demonstrating the harms of transgender policies. Today, I'd like to focus a little bit about the moral perspective, as well as to share the position of the new administration and president-elect on this topic. Obedience to parents reflects the disposition of obedience to God. Disobedience to parents reflects a disordered relationship with God, a rebellion, "I will not obey." And from Ephesians, "Children, obey your parents in the Lord, for this is right. This is the first commandment, with a promise, that it may go well with you, and you may have a long life on earth." Pope John Paul II, who initiated World Youth Day because of his great love for youth and hope for them in the future of the world, he knew that the hearts of young people were seeking love and filled with passion, and if taught God's truth, were capable of changing the face of the earth. And what he said was, "The greatest deception and the deepest source of unhappiness is the illusion of finding life by excluding God, of finding freedom by excluding moral truths and personal responsibility." As you're aware, children are becoming more and more depressed and suicidal. 66% of teen girls are very depressed or sad and hopeless, and 35% have considered suicide. The answer is not turning away from parents, but turning away from evil. Not every parent is good, however, there are laws and safeguards to protect children from abuse. Because of lack of maturity, kids can easily be deceived into believing that they will find personal happiness in changing their body or sex. But the truth is, God made us male and female, and our sex is stamped in every cell of our body, and science confirms that the chromosomes XX or XY, which determines a person's sex, is roughly within the 30 trillion cells of the adult human body and cannot be changed by any doctor, medication, or surgery. With maturity, we realize that life does not come without some suffering or hardship. But C.S. Lewis affirms, "Hardship prepares ordinary people for an extraordinary destiny. The difficulties children experience must be responded to with love, with truth, and with real meaning of their identity, not lies or falsehood. Lies are robbing our children of their happiness and their future." The truth is, children are not happy. No gender-affirmation puberty blockers or operations can change that. Only God can fill the void in their hearts. They're seeking love, and instead, they're being used for shameful purposes. Hundreds of thousands of American children and millions worldwide are objects of sexual perversion and human trafficking. They're commodities for profits by the medical-industrial complex and targets for woke ideologies and social agendas with these transgender policies. We are doing children a great disservice when we accept and even codify lies, because it will lead them to hopelessness. If we want children to flourish, we must teach them the truth and live that truth in our daily lives and decisions. And the truest of all truths is love, and the source of that love is God. May God give you the wisdom and courage to trust in the truth and act on it, and may the truth set you free.[1598.01] And the last couple, if I have a minute, I have a few comments from our president-elect who has said, who has committed to declare gender insanity being, committed to declare the gender insanity being pushed on our children as child abuse, as you've just heard. Some of the things he intends to do is, the Department of Education will inform states and school districts that if any teacher or school official suggests to a child that they could be trapped in the wrong body, they will be faced with severe consequences, including potential civil rights violations for sex discrimination and the elimination of federal funding. As part of the administration's new credentialing body for teachers, they will promote positive education about the nuclear family, the roles of mothers and fathers, and celebrating rather than erasing things that make men and women different and unique. He will ask Congress to pass a bill establishing that there are only two genders recognized by the United States government, male and female, assigned at birth. The bill will also make it clear that Title IX prohibits men from participating in women's sports and protect the rights of parents from being forced to allow their minor child to assume a gender which is new and an identity without parental consent. The identity will not be new and will not be without parental consent. There was one other thing here that was for teachers.
Thank you. Your five minutes is up.
Paul Lund, Hope Lund. So I've been coming here two years covering the same topic. I get the impression, though, that the tides are changing, that there might be a return to what used to be called normalcy and common sense. That's my hope. That's why I was excited by the result of two weeks ago. I want to bring it more close to home. All politics is local, and I want to note that 20,800 people in Woodbridge Township voted for Ms. Harris, 20,300 voted for Donald Trump. And that also gives me hope. And it's interesting that for four years, we've been hearing, or even actually back to Hillary's run, that anyone who would support Trump is a racist, deplorable, a Nazi, garbage. That kind of discourse that one side is always pointing out, to have a civil discourse, be inclusive, that hate has no home here. They're the ones calling those kind of names, there's no place for it. And these same people, I remember, always thought that rioting and looting was some acceptable form of protest made out of someone who was fentanyl addicted, who lived a violent life and unfortunately died resisting arrest. I would have wished that Mr. Floyd had an opportunity to find God, to find Jesus, to have transformation in his life before dying in such an ignominious way. But I would not call him a martyr. By definition, a martyr lays down their life voluntarily for a bigger cause. Now, I'm not trying to get on a high horse, I'm not trying to turn this into a sermon. I just want to make note that there are changes. It's a return to normalcy. We're going to look back on this era of transing kids, of having public school officials lying to parents about social transitioning, and this fallacy that somehow they're going to find happiness and meaning in life by changing their bodies. How superficial an existence it is to live for sexual gratification. You folks are part of a program, and I don't know how you're able to, because you have children and you have grandchildren and nieces and nephews, how you can rationalize standing idly by the dictates of an overreaching government, which will be clawed back in this new administration. That is my hope. My biggest hope is that we return education to its original mission, that it be merit-based, that we don't accommodate the kinds of behavior that I've seen in the classrooms that have become acceptable, that we have a two-tier system of discipline in schools, that there's bad behavior being excused, and it should not be tolerated. I want to see a return to the mission of reading, writing, arithmetic, not sex, not race, not DEI, which is by design divisive, is being pulled out of many corporations. And corporations realize it, I'm hoping that the public institutions are going to realize it, because if not, there's a new sheriff in town who's going to make it abundantly clear that we're all Americans. And as a Christian, we're all human beings. We all tainted by sin with one hope. Our hope and my hope was in Jesus Christ and finding that there's a higher authority than Phil Murphy, there's a higher authority than Mayor McCormick. And I hope that that authority reaches your hearts and minds and your consciences because what you've been allowing is unconscionable. I don't think you have to be explained why it's wrong to confuse children about the gender when they're trying to find meaning in life. They should know what a man is, what a woman is. I mean, I can't even believe we've had to have this discussion again. I hope that we wake up from, the scales fall off many eyes and people are woken up from this woke nightmare. And I yield, thank you.
Through the chair.
Ms. Anderson.
Is there any more public comments?
Any more public comments? Seeing none?
You have closed public comment, right?
Yes.
Public comment is now closed?
Public comment is now closed.
Through the chair.
Ms. Anderson.
I just want to make a comment on this last statement that I heard as it was disrespectful to the murder of George Floyd and to question his spirituality and to question any of the other accusations that was brought to the podium. I just want to make a public announcement that I feel that was very disrespectful to the family of George Floyd, to everyone who was suffering as a result of seeing that murder of George Floyd. I want to make sure that that was not the expression of the board, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that that was a very thoughtful, you know, it wasn't a thoughtful comment, it actually was very disrespectful.